Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Connors. I'm the mayor of Titusville. I'm about to call this meeting to order of the Special Recognitions and Presentations Meeting on November 26, 2024 at 5:30 at City Council. With that being said, I'm going to ask you all to take a moment of silence for our invocation. Thank you. And now stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody being here this evening. We'll roll right on to our agenda. City manager?
And clerk, would you read the rules for the minute meeting?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I think Member Nelson's a little under the weather. She said she would try to make it to the 6:30. So with that, we are on Agenda Item 4A, which is the Employees of the Month for October 2024 and November 2024. The first one we'll recognize is Andrea Curry, who's a plant operator for the Water Resources Facility. And I think Kevin's going to do the presentation.
So it's my pleasure to call Mr. Andrea Curry up for, be recognized as our October Employee of the Month. Andrea was nominated by supervisors for his exemplary attitude, his go-get-'em attitude, and he's also taken on a lot of new tasks as a new operator. He's working on a continuing education right now in advanced wastewater treatment, which will help our plant operations and his career as he grows. And again, it was my pleasure and honor to award Mr. Curry that honor for October.
So mayor, if I could have you come down and give the presentation?
And from our Community Development Department, Ms. Lori Roberts and Mandy Lomath is going to do the presentation for us.
All right, so it's, we're both bashful. So I'm very happy and honored to present this to Lori. Our department director, Brad Parish, nominated Lori, and I'd like to read what Brad wrote. But on a personal note, Lori's been with us for just over six years. Lori makes me laugh every day. She makes all of us laugh every day. She works very, very hard. She came to us with over 30 years at the Brevard County Clerk's Office. As soon as I read her application, I thought, this is it. I need, I've got to get her here because her government experience over there was a huge deal. Although she had never worked in business licensing, she knows code, knows how to apply them, and she's a huge asset. And I try every day to encourage her to stay six and a half more years until I can fully retire, but she continues to fight me on it. So I'm still working on that. So anyway, the nomination reads Lori is a dedicated and hard-working employee as the city's point of contact for business licenses. Earlier this year, the department discovered several issues with the special event process, such as events occurring without proper city approval, missing liability forms, and incomplete applications. The most significant issue was the lack of dedicated personnel to the task. In June, Lori agreed, with some encouragement, to take on the difficult task of correcting this process. In addition to her licensing duties, she assumed the role as special event coordinator. Lori helped to improve the special event process by following up with applicants, ensuring applications were complete, coordinating with various staff members and other departments, and providing a high level of professionalism to the public to this task. She is extremely organized and focused on continuously learning and developing best practices. The city is truly fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Onto item 4B, which is the Community Development Department overview. The Community Development Department developed a public participation guide for the benefit of new council members, board members, and the public at large. The guide describes the role of the department in implementing the Florida Growth Management Act, the Florida Building Code, the Florida Code of Ordinances, and land development regulations, and processes by which the property owner may seek relief from these standards. We've got a video that we're going to start with, and then Mr. Parish is going to provide you a presentation. And on the dais, we went ahead and gave you the updated land use, and we put some additional information on the back of that now that was not on the original one for your use. And if you need additional ones of those, or you lose it, just let us know, and we'll certainly replace. So with that, Mr. Parish?
As stated, we'll start with the department video, and after that, we'll give the presentation about the guide.
The Community Development Department consists of the Planning Department, Development Services, the Building Department, Neighborhood Services, Economic Development, a redevelopment planner, sustainability planner, and GIS. The department is responsible for the review and approval of all development proposals in the city. The Planning Department provides review and analysis of land use and development proposals to ensure compatibility with the community standards as established by the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. The planners ensure the city's comprehensive plan is consistent with state requirements and analyzes land use and development patterns to maximize smart growth. The planners help develop new public policy per city council's direction, and they facilitate public participation and community engagement in the planning process. The redevelopment planner implements the city's downtown redevelopment plan and budget and assists the executive director with the Community Redevelopment Agency. The redevelopment planner reviews building and design plans for conformance to the city's downtown mixed-use zoning district development standards. The sustainability planner implements the city's sustainability action plan, including submitting grant requests that focus on resiliency and sustainable development. The sustainability planner also serves as the staff liaison to the Titusville Environmental Commission. As part of the city's development review process, the sustainability planner verifies low-impact development, best-management-practices proposals, and administers any necessary agreements for compliance with the LID ordinance. The Development Services Division serves as the centralized point of contact for all new residential, commercial, and industrial projects. Staff is responsible for conducting technical engineering reviews of all new development proposed in the city. Staff reviews site plans, landscape plans, grading plans, utility plans, drainage studies, and traffic reports related to each proposed development to ensure that all new development is conducted in compliance with the technical requirements of the city's land development regulations. The division provides technical assistance for variance requests to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and waivers to the city's administrative-level Development Review Committee. The Development Services Division also issues all business tax receipts, also known as occupational licenses, to businesses and certain nonprofits throughout the city. These include commercial, retail, industrial, mobile vendors, and even home-based businesses. The Building Division reviews all vertical building construction plans and permit applications, as well as issues permits for construction, redevelopment, and building improvement projects and inspections. The building official and city engineer are the city's floodplain managers and help the city maintain its community rating in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. The city's participation in the program helps residents and business owners obtain flood insurance. The Neighborhood Services Department has grown to a team of seven employees and serve as the city's administrator for various federal and state grant programs related to housing, public services, community development, and revitalization strategies throughout the city. The department is tasked with developing and managing neighborhood revitalization and affordable housing strategy area plans regulated by the U.S. Department of Housing and the state of Florida, and oversees the operations of the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center and its community programs and services. The department formulates and implements the city's five-year Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Annual Action Plans, and the State Housing Initiative Partnership Three-Year Local Housing Assistance Plan. Additionally, the department leads the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee in the development of the city's annual housing incentive plan. In addition to managing these ongoing federal and state grant programs, the department serves as administrator of several special or one-time grants relating to affordable housing and human services, such as the American Rescue Plan Act, National Opioid Settlement, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Coronavirus, and Live Local Act programs. The department negotiates, regulates, and monitors these programs and associated subaward agreements to ensure subrecipients and funded projects are in compliance. The Economic Development Department is tasked with the strategic planning and execution of initiatives aimed at enhancing the city's economic landscape. Its duties encompass attracting new businesses through targeted outreach and development programs, supporting the expansion and retention of existing businesses, and facilitating job creation to bolster the local economy. Furthermore, the department serves as a vital liaison between the city, its business community, and other governmental entities, ensuring collaborative efforts towards economic sustainability and development. The Community Development Department is currently working on comprehensive plan amendments related to the Titusville Tomorrow Project. The purpose of the project is to incentivize redevelopment in the downtown and on the city's major commercial corridors with flexible development standards and increased density in key areas. In addition, the project envisions opportunities for infill development in the Canaveral Heights neighborhood. This project should be completed by the end of 2024.
So this presentation was, or this video was shown to the city council last year. We do this typically every year, a new video. But wanted to show this to the new council members. Some of the items that were stated inside that video, such as the Titusville Tomorrow Project, that's still ongoing, different stages. And obviously, we're not going to be able to complete that by the end of this year, so it is continuing on into 2025. With that, I'll turn it over to Manny. She'll give you a short PowerPoint presentation on the public participation guide that we have.
Okay, just a very brief summary from kind of start to finish on a project, and what the Planning Department and the Site Development Services Division, what we handle each and every day. So one of the questions from the, kind of the tippy-top from what we handle is why I have a comprehensive plan. It's to identify and meet the needs of our community, meet the challenges of our growth and the change that we see, to share a clearly stated vision. And the comprehensive plan is a state requirement in Chapter 163. Kind of origins of the planning in the state of Florida, the first Comprehensive Planning Act was in 1975. This was all to address the rapid onslaught of development in the state. And in 2011, they put together the Community Planning Act. The comprehensive plan sets apart, sets aside a unified vision. It's a vision document for the city. There's 10 elements in our comprehensive plan, such as the future land use element. We also call that the FLE, a lot of acronyms that we use, the transportation element, conservation element. The comprehensive plan starts with goals, the broad vision statement. Underneath those goals, we have our separate objectives to help achieve those goals, and then our policies, which are more specific to achieve the objectives, ultimately the goal. And based on those policies, we have our land development regulations, which we also call the Land Development Code. The Land Development Regulations within that, you will find the zoning, the development standards, which is everything that a developer or citizen needs to know about putting together a plan for a subdivision review, site plan review. Our concurrency is within our Land Development Code. Certain horizontal construction is in our, what we call our tech manuals. So if you go to our municoat online, you're going to see the comprehensive plan. You're going to see the land development regulations, and you're going to see the technical manuals, which are more specific on like parking space numbers, sizes, and all that. Then we also have more vertical construction requirements in the state of Florida Building Code, which is a completely separate document, just like the National Fire Code, that the Building Division has to comply with. So the Building Division has the Land Development Code and the Florida Building Code. What factors drive our plans that we have, the community values, transportation needs, future land uses, environmental concerns, and cultural and social influences? Up until about a month ago, our GIS department was within community development. We have some really, really amazing GIS staff. Our GIS maps, if you've never seen them, are on our website. We have developers tell us all the time in our meetings, I cannot believe that you guys provide this information. Specifically, the utility maps. We have our water and sewer information there, our what's, what's being reviewed, development, what streets are being paved next, just some great information. But GIS allows these multiple layers of information to be communicated to the public on a single map. We can see information, analyze, and better understand spatial relationships. It can provide demographics, like I said, utility information, property information. We have our zoning and future land use maps on the GIS system. Two items that you'll, you will see in the future, or could see for comprehensive plan amendments, are our text amendments. Those are modifications to our policies in our comp plan and our future land use map amendments. This is the majority of the two cases that you'll see relate, they relate to a specific property, and must be shown to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Then you have our zoning regulations, which again are in our land development regulations. Zoning establishes regulations for separation of specific uses. It sets forth residential density. It sets forth the intensity and applicable development standards, such as setbacks and lot coverage. One of the items you'll see is a rezoning. It is a change in the zoning designation on a property. It's a request to allow the property owner to use the land in a way that is not currently permitted. So if they have an office professional zoning, and they want to change to single-family R1C, they will have to come before you to request that change. Any zoning change has to be consistent with the future land use that's outlined in the comprehensive plan. The next application you'll see is a conditional use permit. All the conditional use permits are specified in our land development regulations. They allow special uses, which require public hearings at city council. These uses may have an increased potential for off-site impacts, and council may impose additional conditions to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. A variance, that is not an item that comes before city council. It is heard by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. It's a relief from the requirements of the code where there is a hardship to allow reasonable use of the land, such as reduction of setbacks. If the applicant does not obtain an approval for their variance, they do not appeal to city council. They appeal to the circuit court. Another item you'll see is an annexation. It's the process by which the city expands its city limits to adjacent areas in the county, not already incorporated. These properties are eligible to receive city services, such as water and sewer. Another item that you will often see is a plat. You'll see that in the form of a sketch plat, a preliminary plat, or a final plat. That's creating developable lots through the subdivision of land. It is important that plats are well-designed because the pattern of development will continue to exist for many years. These are heard by Planning and Zoning Commission, and then city council for the final hearing. There are also master plans and development agreements. Master plan is a negotiated plan approved through city council action. A development agreement is a voluntary contract between a local government and a property owner to detail the standards and conditions that will apply to the property. An administrative process that does not get heard by city council, it's an administrative process that's reviewed by staff. It's an engineered site layout showing proposed improvements, such as building configuration, parking, landscaping, stormwater, utilities, anything that you can think of that is not vertical. That is reviewed by our building department, fire department, public works, planning, and the list goes on. Everybody sees site plans. And then typically, at the same time a site plan is being reviewed, the applicant will go ahead and apply for their building permit. These could be for new construction, additions, major renovations, signage, roofs, mechanicals, fences, anything that's not essentially a site plan. Again, there are specific requirements in the Florida State Building Code, Florida Fire Prevention Code, and the Americans with Disabilities Act. And for our department, the very last step is the business tax receipts, which are wonderful Lori Roberts is in charge of. So for instance, when Culvers was being built, they went to planning, do I have the right zoning? Yes. Then they came to my division, Development Services, and started their site plan process. Then they went to the building officials and started their building permit. And when they were ready and had their CO, the very last step was obtaining their business tax receipt. And again, all of this information is located on municoat.com. You'll find the comp plan, the land development regulations, technical manuals, and on our homepage, all those wonderful GIS maps that our staff work so hard on. And I just want to add one more thing. If you ever want to know what's coming to the city of Titusville, our department knows the truth.
Thank you very much. So also included in your packet is the actual public participation guide. So this is what we have for, this is the, the presentation was basically snippets through the guide itself, but it's a very useful document to have and to reference as we go forward. Mr. Parish, anything else?
Yeah, the guide was created about eight years ago. We use it for our new commissioners, new board members as they come on board. And so we just wanted to use this opportunity to bring it before city council as well. So we'll take any questions you have about this, our processes, the video, and anything else that you may be curious about.
Questions?
I think, I think Member Stokel was first.
I don't care.
No, okay. First, I want to commend you on this guide. I always learn so much when I go through these, and as well as the GIS. I often point people to that when they're asking what is coming up, what developments are coming up, and I, I love using it. One thing I would like to ask, and I did mention this with Mr. Broome, it talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission and how we should have a liaison. And although our, we read the, was it the statute, or the city code, it, it said may?
That's correct. A member on the PNZ maybe also be a member of the TEC. That's correct.
So looking at this, it, it appears that we should have one, a TEC, and a liaison on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I personally would prefer. And so maybe that's something that we could discuss in the future. I feel like because those meetings are not all recorded, it would be helpful. We had Tom Perez, who was our liaison on the PNZ, who ended up stepping down. And so there was a big gap there. And so that would be something in the future I would like to look at as it's referenced here. I know it's not something we have to do, but I, I know that today we're going to be looking at an application for the TEC, and so that's just something to think about as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
So Chick-fil-A is coming, is what I heard. Yeah. No, I appreciate the presentation. I will say it was interesting when I was having my briefing with the city manager, and something I hadn't thought of. To me, when I think about like serving on council, this is the biggest department. And I think, I think that because this is primarily what we deal with, and what I feel like a big part of what impacts our city and what developments get approved. But when you think about all of our employees and stuff, it's actually a relatively small department. And you guys are tasked with a lot. And I, I don't think even the presentation, I feel like doesn't even truly explain everything you guys do, and how the comp plan relates to our current code, and state statute coming down every cycle, it seems like. So I just commend you, and to Member Muscoso's point, the GIS mapping is a great tool. I find myself pushing that out a lot when you see things pop up. Oh, did you know this was coming? No, did not know that was coming. That's not coming. I also teach an urban and regional planning class, and some of my students actually pick the city of Titusville to look at our codes and stuff. So it's really cool to see some of my students looking at our website and playing around with what we offer. So I just want to say thank you.
Any ballots? Seen, none?
Next is petitions and requests for the 5:30 meeting.
Any petitions, any requests? Tony, I'd feel left out if you didn't.
Tony Schifolo, Tropic Street. I also was very impressed by the presentation and hearing that there's, are there hard copies of this that are available to citizens, is my question. I need one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Any other petitions? Seen, none? I believe I can, oh, I thought Herman was going to push the button. Seen, none? none, I was going to call this special meeting and presentation to adjournment.